I call the special meeting of the Board of Public Works for September twentieth to order. Do you have a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So we have verified members of the board here, Barbara Curtis, Preston Lee, Mitchell Nichols, and Bob Peffernan. I wasn't sure if Andrew's coming or not. He texted me earlier and I'm just gonna check.
That is a great marsh.
Stuck out the great marsh.
Andrew's not, the mayor's not gonna be joining us. Austin Kalman is excused. Robin Davis is gonna hold his place in great esteem, and we have Mike Hoffman, our legal counsel. And this will also be our last meeting from this room. Can we have a moment of silence?
Don't you need a permit?
As you'll notice, other teams, it was by these folks. All right.
You'll be discharged.
Open forum general discussion on awarding the contract for the sixteen inch canal crossing. What do they mean?
Are we gonna go into the second session?
Yeah. Or because we're in the second session, but this portion is clean. Let's. So GMB, I think you can present.
Stand or sit.
Bring a podium if you want.
So Tom's passing out the, our recommendation letter along with the bid tabulation for the bids that we received on this project. As we, as was directed in the last four meetings, GMB went out with an association with Robin and Austin and solicited bids from three contractors. For this project. We opened bids on September thirteenth. Here in this room, two bids were received. One was from Teal Construction and the other one from Georgian Lynch. Melkar did not submit a bid for this project. So all that's enclosed. In the, in the documentation. So the way we were looking at this was figuring out who was the lowest responsible, but also fastest to mobilize contractor for this project. The lowest base bid with prevailing wage rates that meet that criteria was received from Teal Construction in the amount of one million seven hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars. This includes an HDPE directional drill material. As you'll, as you'll read, we are requesting the flexibility in selecting the drill material. The other alternative is fusible PVC and the reason we're doing that is we wanna work with the contractor to best select based on what's the quickest material to get here, but also paired with, you know, what's the most appropriate for drill location? You know, where do we, you know, factors of, of construction that we weren't able to fully flesh out with, with the contractor. So the, the difference between the HDP and the fusible PVC on the lowest base bid is about twenty-five thousand dollars. So if we, if you grant us the flexibility and we, we, and we switch to the fusible PVC, it would result in a deduct of twenty-five thousand dollars to the project.
Have you checked on availability? I just wanted to make sure.
We were waiting until after tonight.
Correct. We, we wanted to get the award done before we started meeting with the contractor and discussing that.
You only leave that open. We don't have to vote on that.
That's, that's what we're asking for is that flexibility to change that. So the, the award would be the bit. Our recommendation for the award would be the base bid with the flexibility to change to fusible PVC, which would end up being a deduct of twenty-five thousand dollars in change.
So reduction in price.
Yes, correct.
What's the difference between the two materials in terms of longevity and performance? And why is one cheaper than the other?
So the difference is really HDP is a thicker wall material. They both, I'll, I'll take a step back. They both meet the same pressure requirements. That's key, but the HDP to achieve that has a thicker wall. So what that equates to is from talking with the contractors, that's one more pass of the reamer to make the hole that we slide the pipe in for the directional drill big enough to hold HDP. Whereas if we're fusible PVC, which is a thinner wall material, you have the likelihood to reduce that time and effort one pass. So that's why it's a little bit cheaper to go with fusible PVC.
The material isn't any, any cheaper, just the passes?
Um, I don't know, I don't know what you think, Ben, so material cost differences.
I'm not sure. I think the PVC might be cheaper. There's other, there's other factors. There's other advantages of PVC over, Ben mentioned the HDP is flexible, which allows you to make tighter radius bends. So you can turn around corners and you have funny alignment that you wanted to achieve. The benefits of PVC over HDP is PVC comes in typical pipe size dimensions. So there's no special fittings needed to transition from HDP to PVC to your, you know, cast iron pipe that's in place, et cetera. And also there's quite a bit of a difference in thermal expansion between the HDP and the PVC, which on this, this particular application doesn't really come into play, but sometimes if you're using HDP in shallow applications and the, the, the HDP can expand and contract and it could cause your, your water connections, water services to loosen up over time. We don't have any water services in this particular run, so that's not really a factor. But that's, that's, that's often a benefit of going with the fusible PVC. I will say this, I'm actually surprised that it's less because my experience prior to this is that the fusible PVC is actually a little bit more expensive all total than the HDP.
I mean, it's one percent.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they're essentially, yeah.
They're essentially equal on.
What about generation of microplastics in our water?
How does PVC compare to HDP? I'd have to do some research on that and then I.
Because that's a big deal in the news right now.
What are, what are the, what the longest lengths of HDPs that you can?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure when they, and this is fusible PVC, right? So they're using the PVC together. It's not Bell and Spigot joints, obviously.
Well, my point is it's a lot less joints.
I think they can come, I think they could come in as long as forty foot lengths.
I'm, I'm just trying to get to her point. Your joints and maybe that's what makes less.
I mean, PVC, obviously, there's a heck of a lot of PVC pipe in the ground.
And the other thing is that in reading the state permitting, the description that says HDP and the state build from.
We've checked on that with Evelyn Malmeyer, who's doing the permitting workforce, and she didn't think that's an issue.
I just wanna make sure we, we weren't constrained, especially from the direction of the building.
Right. And looking at the bids, it looks like there's a three hundred thousand spread between the two contractors. If, is there a simple way of identifying where that three hundred thousand dollar difference is?
Simple, simple's, I guess, in the eye of the beholder. I think, you know, a lot of the cost is related to the directional drill cost, the difference between Georgia Lynch and Teal. Off the top of my head, I think that was close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference between the two.
Meaning one was using directional and the other one wasn't?
No, it's just, just their cost for performing that activity. You know, Georgia Lynch was a little bit higher cost wise, which when you take that over the nineteen hundred plus feet, you know, that each dollar adds up to.
You know, puts a certain sub anyway.
Forty, forty of those mobilization.
That's very bad.
I think the real answer is Teal wants the job and Teal's a reputable contractor of ours. So.
They're the ones that did the.
Donovan Smith.
Donovan Smith, yeah.
And they're working on the header pipe project right now out of the well field.
Robin, I don't know if you wanna chime in on that at all?
No, I, I think Teal, Teal would do a real fine job. I never really lived, I mean, they, we've not really had any issues with them on all the projects they've been doing. They've done several projects within this city, so feel comfortable with.
Yeah, both of the, both of the contractors.
Correct. Yeah, I have nothing against Georgian Lynch, but yeah.
I think they just bought Caswell.
Yeah, yeah.
Is Georgian Lynch getting additional work otherwise from BPW on other projects?
I think they did the Front Street project. Didn't, didn't they do the Front Street project?
Yeah, they have done projects. Again, getting additional ones. Again, we'd have to go through bidding processes like we did here.
Right, right, but, but it's not that Georgian Lynch is being discouraged indirectly because he's not getting, he's not awarded any bids. That's the aspect that I'm headed towards. Not that that's an excuse to give him more money just to keep him bidding. It's a business decision.
Right. And the more important one is, besides the cost, Teal says they can mobilize in October.
And, and finish when?
Per, per the contract, to get everything up and operational water wise, it's four months and two weeks, a hundred and twenty-six days. And, you know, they're, they're bound by the contract to, to hit that or they start getting assessed damages.
And what could mitigate that? Where, where, where would they be allowed a legitimate extension?
Um, I mean, weather delays are number one, like, you know, just hurricane comes in and, you know, takes them out of commission for a week, like that, that would be a legitimate claim.
Okay, we just, is, do we have criteria in place? Either historically of what you would represent and recommend, yes, that's legitimate. And you are tracking the progress and they are advising you. And currently, oh, hey, we're having a delay and we're gonna file for it.
Mike, you wanna chime in on this?
No, I mean, I would just, I would say, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a fair question. The, what I would caution is at the end of the day, that's all gonna be driven by the contract documents. So whether you actually do have a claim or whether you have relief is going to be driven by the contract documents. I think that Ben's answer was fair in terms of what you generally see. Uh, but I think, Richard, if you want anything kind of more specific than that, we can pull out the contract and we can sit down and talk.
I'm, I'm, I'm forgetting right now, but Georgian Lynch said they couldn't do it till.
Right. Yeah, that's, that is a good point to mention. Yeah, December, the beginning of December was when Georgia Lynch indicated that they could get started on the project, whereas Teal said they could get started just as soon as they have materials, which would be anticipated to be in October.
So, I mean, if it was the reverse, you might say we should award more money to, for an earlier start, but in this case,
They're both alive.
Yeah, it seems to be.
Not using a legal term, but time is of the essence. We, we are down to two crossings. One of them is already banned.
No question.
Yeah, I like candles every week.
It's not too close to the crossing.
Richard's question, I think, you know, we have an inspector on site every single day. So we're well aware when things are coming down the pipe that might delay the project. And we handle those on a daily basis. So at some point, if there's legitimate claims again, it's a week above the hundred and twenty-six days, we would bring it to the board, start out with Austin and Robin and go from there. But we're, you know, we're in touch with the contractor every day on those things.
So it's, the biggest risk to me seems frac out. So what is, is, what is, is that really a low risk or not? So that's where you start to get the canal leaking into the drill. Bad juju.
So we, we had met with several HDD contractors and took their recommendations in terms of depth. So obviously, deeper you go, the less likely you're gonna have frac outs. And we're, we're over forty feet deep as we go through the marsh and underneath, well, underneath the, the canal, we're like in the thirty foot in depth range, which they all, they all kind of recommended and felt most comfortable with. They're obviously where the implications of frac outs in the marsh are even worse than in there. So.
And there, there is a plan that is in place as part of the permitting effort that we have to have a frac out plan in place for the contractor.
Yeah, we, we did one of these ten years ago, a crossing, the same thing.
Yeah, and by the way.
By the university.
And press that's fusible PVC.
Are you really thirty feet down? Just, while it's pretty small print, I thought I saw twenty-five.
Might be twenty-five. I know, yeah, I think right under the canal is maybe a little less, but when you get further out, you know, along the rail for the, of the trail there, like it's, it's in the forty to fifty foot deep.
I know, you know, I'm old. Watch it, hard to read. Yeah. I'm not up to your stage. But I saw plenty of it.
Um, oh, it's from the email box. I see that it's about two hundred thousand dollars more because of prevailing wages.
I see it. Looks like it's fifty-nine.
It, it, yeah, it's, it's the.
Okay, it's C three two, it's fifty-nine feet. Ninety, fifty-nine.
It's, I mean, Barbara answered your comment, just a little bit more like using prevailing wage increases if I tend to twenty percent.
C three one.
Oh, they have one in the trees.
It's, it's just required rates that they have to pay, you know, a laborer under prevailing wage rates versus a regular rate without state mandates, you know, certain rates for truck drivers, laborers, plate fitters.
And there are certain job categories that have higher rates in Sussis County than you would expect. And that's what plays into the additional costs.
Yeah, well, it's twenty-five.
Yeah, it is twenty-five under the canal.
So. Page, C three.
The tricky part with that profile under the canal is, you know, we didn't want it, we wanted to come up as close as possible to Gil's Neck Road. So we minimize, you know, the length of pipe we need to connect back in the Gil's Neck Road. So everything, those, those radii are dependent upon the radii, the capability of the drilling equipment and the bending radius of the pipe itself. So that's how that was arrived at.
Okay.
If we could go deeper, we would, but then what happens is it extends the point where you come up out of the ground that much further away.
What happens on this end? So you, you drill it, but then what do you do? Cut that off and bring it up some directly or?
When you say this end, what end you mean?
On the. This side of the canal.
This side of the canal. So we're gonna come up out of the ground and we're basically gonna make a U-turn connecting to Gil's Neck.
You're gonna go back out of the ground. And then then back over to, so there's some future house that has that underneath it.
No, it'll all be in Della dot.
It's a reliable reason. That's the reason for the item four.
All right. Is there a? My understanding is they drill and then they pull the pipe.
Yeah.
And once they pull the pipe, does that mitigate risk of the fracking or, or things that can go bump in the night?
Yeah.
Is there any estimate of how long that would take from the start of the drilling to the that initial.
From the start to when they pull the pipe through?
Probably three to four weeks total. There's, there's some, some of that's related to layout, but you have three to four weeks, including layout from start to finish.
Because that would be a lot shorter than water ready, right?
Sorry, I don't understand the question. A lot shorter than.
So timeframe.
Yeah, three to four weeks for us is a hundred twenty-six days to completion.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that period of time is much.
Because that would seem to be the, the first critical timeframe uh, to be targeting and looking to see.
Yeah. So a lot, that's gonna depend on the lead time for the PVC versus the HDP.
Right, but still the duration starts when they've got it and they start.
And remember, we've got the whole American Legion Road water main replacement as part of this project too, and that's included in the hundred and twenty-six days because it has to get connected back into Savannah Road to the boring under the canal and connect in the Gil's Neck Road. It's gonna be really good.
Will there be anything above ground at that point?
Above ground? The only thing that'll be, you know, above ground will be you'll see valve covers and then you'll, there's a, a, they call it a sampling station to be able to determine in the future if that main that we drill has, is leaking anywhere.
Okay, well, they'd be at eleven point six more feet.
No.
No, it's just their vault covers. It's, it, there's no perm, there's no connection into the system.
Oh, I get you. Okay.
So it's just like every manhole. Well, it's not even a manhole because things don't go into it.
What was Bob's question? What was your question, Bob?
My question was, earlier, you all decided to protect things, access and so on, eleven point six more feet above ceiling. So I was asking if that was operative in this instance.
Like our valve covers on American Legion Road or at the grade of the American Legion Road, which is.
That's what they are now.
But, yeah.
Should they be different?
Well, pretty valve covers eleven point six feet in the air might be a problem for driving.
Right?
Yeah, because they get wet. The system is sealed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be surrounded by groundwater at certain points.
Yeah, I do understand.
We haven't talked to the contractor yet, but there's a possibility that they might be working doing the open cut work in American Legion Road while they're doing drilling. That makes sense. I don't know what their, you know, plan or approach was, but.
I just drove past that real big, ten cars at a pump station. Parked around it. I didn't, I didn't see anybody going in. I don't know what.
Which pump station? Eight?
I mean, they're all parked around.
Maybe that's just a city service day.
Wouldn't have anything to do with the volunteer efforts.
It probably would. It probably did, yeah, because there weren't any trucks or anything, so I didn't see anybody there.
Oh, yeah, they were doing trail work.
And though we made about the drilling, most of that time is gonna be the drilling. They'll fuse the pipe and lay it out one continuous length, okay, in that same drilling timeframe. But the actual pulling of the pipe's only gonna be about a day or so when they actually pull them back. Once they start pulling, they don't wanna stop, right, because of that friction, you know, how if you stop, it grips the pipe tighter than if it's moving. So most of that time just gonna be drilling. It's pretty monotonous. You know, and I don't know how many reams they talked about. So they drill a small pilot hole, get the direction and the depth correct, and they ream out the hole in stages to, and it's, as they ream the hole out, they pump a betonite slurry into the hole, which keeps the hole from collapsing in on itself. So then when they pull the pipe, that's, that's when you have the, the, you know, possibility of frac outs. It's like pulling a plunger now or a piston through this whole old betonite slurry. So as you can imagine, it creates these pressures that do it at a certain rate, et cetera. And that, as a mud gets pushed out, it gets, it, it gets taken off site. So.
I was gonna ask, where do the spoils go?
It's all captured.
Where?
No, it actually.
They have a piece. They have a piece of equipment that's part of the drilling rig. They call it a recycler, goes in there and they truck it out.
Do we know where it's going? Do we wanna take any samples to find out the quality of the ground?
Yes.
Yeah.
We wanna know the answer.
Which you're pumping in drilling line.
There's a mention.
And what's being ringed. So it's hard to tell what, I think, what, what we want.
Is it gonna go to the Army Corps site?
Yeah, we're gonna cover the building.
No, 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 I mean, the spoil site. Project.
Oh, possible.
Put it in the empty tanks there and then the army has to.
No.
They don't tell them.
They may get, like, the city, the stuff in there, they have to remove it so many years.
Hearing none. We have a motion to accept GMV's recommendations to go with Teal Construction and leave the option open for whether it's PVC or HDP.
Sure, I'm the governor. Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Richard?
Richard Link is the, which saying.
So that's a five zero. Go forth and drill.
Drill, baby, drill.
Sorry about that.
Can I, can I say one thing? I think the city or public would be really interested to know, you know, a rough schedule, maybe not.
So next, the next Wednesday.
Yeah.
We will certainly go over that. So. No, you're absolutely right. This is obviously of interest to the public. So.
So I hate to be the one to throw this out there, but really probably what's gonna dictate the start of this is the, is the permits and the status of the permits and when we actually get the permits. We've gotten several already, but the big one is the Denrick Subiquius permit, which I believe Austin was talking to some people within Denrick. They committed to expediting that. We checked today with our consultant doing the environmental permitting. She has not heard anything from Denrick. Of course, cores, that's in process and that, that's probably gonna, you know, that's gonna go through here probably shortly. I asked her, because we knew her, come today, do you have any guesses when? She says, no, I can't, I can't answer that. I can't give you a guess on that, but there were some issues or. There were some issues or things, not issues, things that came up, some additional requirements. She hadn't made the, the application back in February, I believe, to the core. So that, that was already in process, the core permit, Army Core Engineer, and their jurisdiction is the underneath the canal. They came up with some additional requirements in the last week, which she now we're moving on, she's gotten clarification. But they are, they want, they want some, um. Section and mapping shown on the drawings, which we're in the process of doing. But I think that the, the, that's gonna be the main.
There are two things.
No, so we're, while we're wait, you guys are gonna meet on the Del Dot permit. In the bike path, in the agreement for that railway permit, which that goes through, that was, that's a big one. And I think the Del Dot, the Del Dot utility permit that we need on Savannah Road is a, is dependent on the rail permit, they want to see that.
But this, we have it here, I think, this is, this is the only one, right?
Correct, that's the, that's the Del Dot Railroad permit, yeah, yeah.
The, the other.
That's the permit or that's the application?
Sorry, that's, yeah.
I think so, so a couple of things, I think.
Okay, so how?
That is the permit, that is the permit, if you guys agree to the, um, the maintenance agreement.
Yeah, so. So that's automatic, they get it and it's a trade, I'll try to my sign copy for the. Sign permit.
Yep.
And I think we're getting ahead in the, we're getting a little bit ahead right now.
So I think what would, what would help is all in this conversation, I think it's the right question. But I think now that the contract has been awarded, the next critical question is the lead time for materials. Because that's going to be when you want, I mean, you want to have permits and everything in hand, so that when they get the materials in and they're able to mobilize. That the work can begin. I think per the contract documents, Teal said that they can mobilize October sixteenth, assuming. That the materials are in, so the, the question's going to be getting confirmation on the materials date. And that is going to drive the, the deadline, I, I think, or the goal deadline for the permits. And so I think what I would recommend is as soon as we can get information on the lead time for the materials, we can run that concurrent with the permits.
Where I, where I was going was just, you know, notifying Denrick that. They're the, they're the.
Hold up.
The holdup.
Yeah, yeah, we're ready.
I think.
We're just about ready, Mike's ready, you know.
Yeah, telling them that the board's approved, it's ready to go. Like, urgency.
And then, and I think they are aware, Evelyn's been communicating with them that, you know, the board is in this position, we've solicited bids from contractors now. Obviously today we're at the stage of having a contractor.
She's gonna call and say, been approved, I think.
Yeah.
And Austin's been.
And, yeah, I'd say before Austin left, Friday was the bid opening. And Austin had, and he felt that it was gonna be within like two weeks at that point. You know, speaking, not speaking for him.
It was no, no harm in keeping on.
Oh, yeah.
We have the permit from Soil Conservation District and we have the permit from Austin drinking. So it's really the Sub Aquas, Denrick Sub Aquas for permit. And then tight, tightening up these Del Dot permits. So to further Mike's point, now that we have your guys authorization to award the contract. We'll actually develop the contracts, get them into the hands of Teal for their execution and then back to the board for your execution. And then we'll schedule a pre-con meeting. Maybe even schedule the pre-con meeting while the contracts are going back and forth, so then we can establish the material dates a little better at that pre-con.
Mike, I think it might be appropriate to go into executive session at this point?
Well, I recommend, I mean, I think we put number four on the agenda, uh, just in the event that we were ready to go, uh, with it, and, uh. We're not ready to go with, I'm not ready, uh, for the board to go, uh, forward with that one, but we also noticed it on Wednesdays, uh, so we'll be ready for Wednesday. Um, so I would punt, uh, four to Wednesday and then go into executive session.
Okay. And we will have an executive session before the board meeting next Wednesday. I think that's in the pack, isn't it? Executive session before?
Yes, from two o'clock, two o'clock to four o'clock.
Yeah, so we have one before and after, okay. All right. In that case, go ahead and motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to. Session, second session.
No.
No, I would punt action on four today, but let's still go into executive session since we're here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Tell them. Do I have a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.